I'd like to call the Planning and Commission meeting to order. I'd like to introduce the staff, starting to my right. We got Mike Fitcham, Director of Planning. We got George Bieber of Madison, Bob Schwartz of Bowling Green, Pers Amano, Madip Anai, Dr. Carlos Alton from Port Royal, and Scott Severn from Western Carolina. And Lisa Sack, Administration Planner. Can we stand for the place, Lisa, on the flag?
While Lisa is, we're in flag. She says, I'm going to hold what you stand.
You're not having minutes at this time. So we go into unfinished business, RZ-01-2022. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, the applicant has actually requested a deferral of this rezoning request from tonight's meeting. Lisa, did they give us a date?
To go to the October 27th meeting.
So the appropriate action by the Commission would be to accept the request for deferral to the, by the applicant, to the October 27th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Can I get a motion to accept the deferral?
So moved.
Second.
Now we open up the public hearing. We had a protocol for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or their representative will be allowed 15 minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief and not to exceed three minutes. And after the public hearing has closed, the applicant or their representative will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you. We're going to deviate from our, from our agenda. We're going to go right to subdivision ordinance, oh two, oh three, right?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Staff report on oh two.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, these two public hearings actually are related to the same matter, which is to address issues related to street widths and turnaround requirements for fire and EMS apparatus. So you can actually hold these two public hearings together as long as you vote on each item separately. SO 02-22 would amend the subdivision ordinance requirements, specifically Section 5-22 minimum width, to require a minimum roadway width of 26 feet. That would be from curb to curb or edge of pavement to edge of pavement, as the case may be, which is intended to provide adequate road width for fire and rescue apparatus on, through subdivision streets in the county. SO 03-2022 proposes to amend Section 5-24 cul-de-sacs to require a dead-end street to have adequate turnaround areas for fire and EMS vehicles. We, we have a situation, or have had situations, where private, say driveway accesses for townhouses and developments and things like that, don't provide adequate turnaround for our public safety vehicles. This would close that loophole so that staff, in its review of subdivisions, can ensure that there is adequate turnaround areas for public safety vehicles in these townhouse communities and, and other single-family communities, such as Lady Smith Village in South River, so that fire apparatus doesn't have to back out long distances from these terminating streets or, or parking areas. And that's the purpose of these two amendments. They are public safety in nature, and, and staff crafted these amendments after discussion of issues with the Chief Loftus of, of the Caroline County Fire and Rescue. And he'll be here to address those issues as well tonight.
Okay, thank you. Now we open up the public hearing. And Brad will speak on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, good evening. These two issues that Mr. Fincham had outlined are really for public safety apparatus. Caroline County is buying new apparatus. That apparatus is much larger than it has been in the past. We recently purchased an aerial truck, which is about 43 feet in length. And when you put the ladder up, the spread of the outriggers to hold the ladder is 18 feet. So widening of the streets and subdivision is critical for the placement of that apparatus, as well as the maneuvering of that apparatus through those streets, making turns, et cetera, from one, one side to the other. The cul-de-sac issue has been a problem in a lot of subdivisions that the, the, they know the state code, they go about 140 feet or 120 feet, and there's just nowhere for our trucks to turn around, nowhere for, if you have a 43-foot truck, you're going to have a trouble trying to do a 16-point turn if there isn't adequate room at the cul-de-sac or a deadhead or something of that nature. So these things are critical for us moving down the road to have good public safety in these subdivisions and throughout the county. So if there's any questions, certainly answer those.
Chief, as you know, I, I live in a subdivision, okay? And I could not imagine that big ladder truck coming into that subdivision and putting the legs out. I think our total street width is 24 feet, if it's lucky. It's probably more like 22. So this is not going to affect any of the existing subdivisions?
No, this will only affect new construction, new plan review moving forward, nothing that's already existing.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
I've got a question as well. So we're purchasing new fire equipment. For the example that George provided, it, it sounds like those trucks would have a very tough time. Are we, is, is there a process, are you maintaining some of the older ones to, will that be in your, you know, inventory to where, I, I would hate to see us get into a position where we've got all this big new stuff, and now we can't service some of these older subdivisions that have the other requirements?
Valid point. Keeping that old stuff is just not an option for us. When it's old, in Caroline, it's 30 years old, it's wore out, getting parts is just not available. At the end of the day, we'll do what we need to do. But again, a lot of these older subdivisions, people park on the side of the roads, even though there's no parking, you know, and our sheriff's office doesn't force that. But that even cuts that width down even more. So we'll do what we can, we have to, but the, the movement in the fire industry is larger trucks, not smaller trucks. And, and you know, when you buy, have to buy a new truck, you're kind of stuck with that model. So, you know, we'll make do in the subdivisions as we need to.
Understand. And this is probably, I, I guess maybe a follow-up. So I, I heard you say, you know, that there are times when vehicles park on the side of the road, the cul-de-sacs, that even impairs, you know, fire EMS capability even more. Obviously Sheriff Lipp is not here today, but that may be something that, you know, we need to make sure is getting enforced so we can, you know, if there is a need, that we can get the fire and EMS vehicles where they need to, to respond to protect our county citizens. So, thank you.
Chief, thank you for your service. As someone who has held a firefighter level one certificate, I can appreciate everything that you're alluding to. I've seen it happen, and when you have, especially at nighttime, when you have to put spotters out at the rear of a fire engine in order to back out of a situation, it gets hairy and it gets precarious. So I appreciate everything that, that you, you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this subject? Public hearing is closed. I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the approval of SO 02-2022, I recommend that SO 02-2022 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries on SO 02.
And we need a motion on oh three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so whereas public safety warrants this, I recommend that we forward SO 03-2022 to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing, can you, with TX?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, your next four items, 5A, 5B, 5C, and 5D, again, we can hold one public hearing on all four items since they are related to a, a single issue, which are amendments to the ordinance related to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Regulations. Once again, upon completion of a public hearing, each, each proposed text amendment would require an individual motion. As the Commission is aware, we actually had a public hearing on these four items on October 15th, which a week ago, last Thursday. The, the four sets of regulations, briefly, TXT 07-2022, we are proposing to amend Article 15, the supplemental regulations, by adding a Section 24 overlay districts, with the first amendment to that overlay district being the updated Chesapeake Bay regulations. The second amendment, TXT 08-2022, would repeal the current subdivision regulations or the current supplemental regulations in Article 15, Section 17, which is the, the current Chesapeake Bay regulations. So whereas oh seven creates a new Chesapeake Bay regulations under the overlay district, TXT 08 would repeal the current regulations that are in effect. TXT 09-2022 would repeal and replace Article 13 of the zoning ordinance, which are your parking regulations that are applicable to any development in the county. And if you will recall, there were a number of amendments to the parking regulations, such as minimizing impervious area for parking and excess of that required by the ordinance, again, related to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, to try to affect goals in the Chesapeake Bay Act as it relates to reducing impervious area and, and managing stormwater runoff. The last amendment, TXT 10-2022, again, we would be amending Article 15 supplemental regulations, but this amendment is specific to Section 14, which are your site plan requirements. And as we discussed in the work session, what we are proposing to do with part of these amendments is to take regulations that are currently in the Chesapeake Bay overlay district regulations and move them to the site plan requirements where those changes are, are appropriate. It's, it, it's really for ease of administration of staff and for providing information to, to applicants that may be seeking site plan approval, so they can find all of those working site plan requirements in one section under the site plan ordinance. And of course, we would cross-reference those requirements back to the appropriate language in the Chesapeake Bay overlay district as well. That's it in a nutshell. We, we did have a work session on this, as I previously stated. And if there are any questions that the Commission may have from that work session, I'd be more than happy to, to address that. I believe it's my understanding that the Commission wants to continue this public hearing as, as we continue to finalize and, and clean up these amendments to your October 27th meeting. But at the same time, we will have another work session. I believe we discuss the October 13th, which is also a Thursday night. So we can continue discussion of these regulations at the work session, get any final changes for the continued public hearing on the 27th. And with that, I'll address any questions that the Board or Commission may have.
Mr. Fincham, one, one thing, you're including the SO 01-2022 in this.
We'll have a separate public hearing on that.
Okay, so you're going to do that separately? Okay.
Well, I've looked at all of these comments that DEQ came up with, and I remember 15, 18 years ago, fighting DCR. Everybody said you can't do that, and guess what? We're DCR, and they removed all potential restrictions. My question is, based on all of these questions that DEQ is asking, based on these changes, Mr. Fincham, do you and staff think that this will answer the questions that they've asked about on their Reservation Act program?
I think we can address most of the issues, but I don't think we can address all of the issues, because I think there is still some subjectivity in interpreting provisions of the, of the, of the regulations, that we may still end up having future disagreements as to how, whether some action we have taken satisfies the requirements.
Well put.
People do the best we can.
Well put, because I think, having gone through this once before, I can only tell you, I look at it and go, you've done a whole bunch of work here, you and staff have done a whole great bunch of work here to try and address all the questions that DEQ has, but we still have to resubmit this to them. Do we have to follow these dates? I mean, they say submit final versions of the document by November, November 4th. Does that have to be done by that time?
That's, that set of regulations, yes, sir. That, that, we've agreed to that. And to your point, let's look at the first page. And the legal requirement that, that's referenced in nine, VAC 25-830-130, subparagraph one.
Gotcha.
And it states, "Through their applicable land use ordinances, regulations, and enforcement mechanisms, local government shall require that any use, development, or redevelopment of land in Chesapeake Bay preservation areas meets the following performance criteria. Number one, no more land shall be disturbed than is necessary to provide for the proposed use or development." That is not a standard.
That's an open question.
That is a subjective statement.
Right, correct.
And my interpretation of what is necessary versus their interpretation of what is necessary may not
Agree.
Align.
Right, understood. And that's why I asked that question, because
Yes.
I, that's the first thing I looked at, I said, no more land shall be disturbed than necessary.
So you, you have regulations that have been adopted, but you don't have performance standards that you can actually measure compliance with. So, so you have a subjective criteria with no performance standards as to how to achieve that.
So now
Which has been
Go ahead.
One of our issues all along.
Okay, so now, based on this request, of course, it's always a demand by the state, but they say it's a request. Does that mean we have to submit these to DEQ by November 4th? Right or wrong?
Yes.
So, so on November 4th, right or wrong, this is what we're going to give to DEQ and say, here's our answers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, in, in order to try to address this regulation, we have come up with a, a, a documentate, a, a process where, from the beginning, where we have our first discussions with an applicant, we make them aware of these DEQ requirements. And from the, that first introductory meeting is an example where somebody comes in, they want to do, they want to rezone a piece of property for a warehouse, okay? We will have these discussions, and we will document whether there are any changes from our first meeting through the zoning process. That's an easy fix. The, the more difficult one to address is going to be the site plan for, you choose to name fast food restaurant that wants to come in and locate in the county and has a one-acre site, and they want to clear that entire one-acre site because their, their model speaks to that, like a Sheetz or McDonald's or whomever. So I think there are still going to be issues in the future. And I, I think we will just have to address that, and if it means we end up going before the State Water Control Board to argue our case, then, then we'll have to do that. Certainly, I think there were some deficiencies. We've worked hard to address them where we can. Some of the deficiencies were in fact, or in part, related to other changes that we did at, at the suggestion of, of, of DEQ. You know, we updated our Chesapeake Bay area maps about five years ago, because we were advised that our maps were deficient. Our pump-out program had been, was based upon those previous maps, so we had to stop our pump-out program until the maps were updated and accepted by, by DEQ. We then resumed our pump-out program after those new maps were, were updated. So a regulatory issue with the maps actually contributed to our delay in, in re-implementing our pump-out program. So it wasn't necessarily acknowledged, but there had been some actions like that that we've had to work through. And I think we're getting there. I don't think it'll be perfect.
Okay, so the first thing we're going to be able to do is submit whatever is in this documentation. We're going to submit this to the state and say, here you are, guys, based on the data you requested, here are the revisions, revisions we've already made.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
What was the state's proof that we didn't do some of these things? Just their review of our ordinances?
Their review of our ordinances and site plans that, that were approved. One of the comments they made was that there wasn't any documentation in the files as to efforts we had made to minimize land disturbance. So as I said earlier, we've come up with this new process to, in an attempt to, to demonstrate. So we, we'll build those provisions for documentation in there, but I think there's still subjectivity in the regulations that we aren't going to be able to, to, to address. Let me give you another example. One site plan that we submitted actually, and it's for a project formerly known as Walmart. the site plan actually identifies wetlands to be preserved and permanent open space. And the review, as to this date, never acknowledged the preservation of those wetlands or that open space as part of their plan review of our program. So we've argued, you know, here it is, there's wetlands here that are to be permanently protected. But there's still a question about whether that was enough or that was adequate. So we're working through those.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
Why can't we make our changes? Send it to them, they send it back to us. You just don't have the time?
We've actually been doing that up to this point. When we started from our end, we were looking at consolidating all of our environmental regulations into Chapter 45 of the county code. Chapter 45 is the old erosion and sediment control regulations. We've also included floodplain regulations in that chapter. The floodplain regulations actually used to be in the zoning ordinance as an overlay district. We were following the same premise. We were gonna take the Chesapeake Bay regulations out of the zoning ordinance and consolidate it into Chapter 45. So that erosion and sediment control, Chesapeake Bay regulations, and the floodplain regulations, and eventually, if and when we adopt it, the stormwater management regulations, all of your environmental regulations would be in that one chapter of the county code. We actually spent a significant amount of time trying to consolidate those three sets of regulations into one functional document. And after spending a lot of time doing that, we ultimately decided to punt and to go back and rewrite these regulations and keep them in the zoning ordinance. So we were going in one direction, and along about July or August, decided to change directions and come back to the zoning ordinance with these changes. So we ended up rewriting these regulations yet again, based upon the comments we had received from DEQ. So we lost probably three to four months of working time pursuing one direction before we decided to punt and come back. But that's kind of how we've gotten here.
But didn't you say it was because of DEQ, you had to go back?
Yes. We said.
They didn't like it putting it in the way you had it.
I think they were okay with it. I think the consolidation became an issue. So we said, okay, rather than making that confusing and trying to pursue that, let's, we'll just fix the zoning ordinance and we'll address that another day. And I can, we can make it work this way as well. I think under the overlay district, we're gonna have to update our floodplain regulations again because they've adopted new maps. That might be the time just to bring that, the flood regulations back and put them in under this overlay section as well.
Yeah, I would keep all the work you did because then you may have, the state may want you to go back again, you know, and change it again at some point.
I hope this finalizes our 10-year program review, and we don't have to go through this for another five years.
Five or 10 years.
So at the end of the day, aside for issues that may have some subjectivity to them, I think our technical provisions will be adequate.
So if I could, I struggled with what they provided us as deficiencies without real specific examples of, we went to this site, and this is why we came out with this. When I looked at, you know, the revisions that we made, the ordinance in the beginning, in my mind, is pretty subjective. I'm not so sure that somebody couldn't read it again after these and come to the exact same conclusions. So that does concern me a little bit, you know, because I feel like you're in this do loop of, you know, the state coming out, DEQ saying, we don't like it, you know, we want you to make these adjustments. We try to make those adjustments, and then we're back in the same place, you know, five years later, oh, yeah, we really don't like that. You mentioned something earlier about performance standards, not having set performance standards, and I think that that really will challenge the county as we go through the, you know, this process. There's one, two things I wanted to bring up and just kind of, you know, get some thoughts on. One of those is TXT 072022, and I'm specifically looking at page 10. The very top of it, there is some yellow highlighted text that talks about a minimum of blank percent of the property shall be retained in open space.
Yes, sir.
And so I'm curious, is that something that the state is mandating, or is that something that we are gonna try to do?
That's a placeholder that we put in there as an example of a standard that might benefit us, that we can demonstrate to the state. We've adopted a standard in response to your comments. That standard is how we're going to evaluate applications within the Chesapeake Bay preservation areas. So that's basically a placeholder that we have placed in the regulations for consideration as to whether that might be an appropriate, some open space, minimum open space requirement might be appropriate for your larger commercial and industrial projects.
Yeah, I would be very cautious if we don't bound that well. We could find ourselves being much more restrictive than what maybe we want to be.
Yes, sir.
The second question I have has to do with TXT 092022. And I know this talks about all-street parking requirements and whatnot, but when you get down to the very first section, one, it talks about two-way drives shall be a minimum of 22 and a maximum of 24 feet in width. And the reason I bring this up is we just had that discussion on subdivisions. I know they're two different things, but if you look at, you know, what we're talking about here, you know, single and two-family residences, apartments, these are approaches to those locations. And it seems to me the state wants us to be, have a smaller roadway than what we just agreed that we pushed to the board for, you know, recommendation of approval, which was 26, so we could get our fire and EMS. If you could just kind of speak to that?
Yes. The cul-de-sac and minimum street with requirements in the subdivision ordinance, and I think we can correct that. But you're correct. On the one hand, we're trying to go smaller, and 24 feet is your typical travel width in a parking lot where you have parking spaces on either side, where it's, your parking spaces are horizontal to your travel lane. 22 feet allows you to have angled parking. Most parking is 24 feet. It's straight in, you know, perpendicular to the travel lane itself. So I think we can clarify or put a caveat in here related to public safety requirements and probably also tie into on-street parking, which is discussed later. Obviously, realistically, if you have a 24-foot wide road, you're not going to have on-street parking. But if you have a 30-foot wide road from curb to curb, then you have adequate space for on-street parking, which is another way to minimize your off-street parking requirements and in theory, reduce your impervious area. So we'll attempt to clean that up, knowing that our discussions with Chief Loftus was inconsistent with language that we had written. We will clean that up before the final vote.
And then in the same document on 13-13, Section 3, if you go down, there's a section that reads, "Parking lot lighting on properties not subject to occupancy at night shall be reduced to the minimum levels necessary." It further goes on to say, "To provide security lighting for the property." I'm curious where the security lighting element to that statement, why that's in there? Is that something that DEQ was pushing or?
No, we actually just included that in the overall parking. Some places, they'll keep your lighting at whatever intensity all night long. Other ordinances that we've looked at require them to cut down on lighting, particularly in large parking areas. So this actually was, we looked at it and just said, let's just clean up the lighting provisions while we're at it. It's not necessarily important to the amendments themselves.
So with that, I'd ask that you consider to stop it at minimum levels necessary?
Okay.
And then just consider whether we truly need the remainder of that sentence?
That works for me.
I've got a couple more, sorry.
That's fine.
Don't mean to take up a lot of time, but, so our first, in the DEQ document, you know, we talked about how they came to their identification of, I guess, these deficiencies. And I found it very interesting that the statement, "The board finds the county has not demonstrated consistent implementation," and consistent implementation is what I'm focused on, "other requirement to ensure that no more land is disturbed." And again, I go back to, you know, they've got a legal requirement here, but, I mean, without specific examples, to me, if you've got an ordinance that everyone uses, you have a site plan that people fill out, that is a consistent application of practice. So I just really struggled with their view on that. My last one, and this was really just a statement, has to do with the pump out program. I've read what our responses are, you know, and their deficiency, the last sentence says, "The county has not demonstrated that its septic pump out program includes and actively uses enforcement mechanisms to ensure compliance." That takes people, you know, probably more so than what the county has budgeted for. Does the state provide resources for us to use to actually conduct enforcement actions like this?
No, sir.
So we're expected to find that somewhere in the budget somehow?
Basically, to incorporate it into our current zoning enforcement mechanisms, which is what we've done. Our process, each year, we identify sections or areas in the county to send out pump out letters. So it's broken down into resource protection areas. Again, those are your most stringent protective measures next to your perennial streams. And we have a number of houses that were built years ago that either the house or a drain field is within an RPA. So that's, we sit down, notices to those properties one year. The next four years is broken up by magisterial districts. So your magisterial districts are your old historical districts, there are four of them. So your current election district boundaries will cross over these magisterial districts. But the thinking was, one RPA, four magisterial districts, you achieve your notification requirement, your five-year notification requirements based upon that cycle. We are in our second cycle or third cycle of doing these notifications. Second cycle. So we're now on year seven, I believe, where we re-adopted or reinstituted our pump out program. My, I think what they didn't like is, okay, you send out notices, what happens if they don't respond? We have a process now where we send out a second notice. So approximately six months after the original notice goes out, we'll send out a second notice. In response to their concerns, we now actually sent zoning violation notices to, I believe it was about 60 properties, plus or minus. And we've identified 22 where we know that they received a letter and have not responded. So we've now forwarded that to the county attorney's office for him to take the next step and to bring these properties before the court to secure compliance. So I think we've now done everything that we can to address that issue.
Yeah, so first, I want to let you know that it's a tremendous amount of work that you're having to do here. I appreciate the work that the staff's doing. I think you're probably pushing a rope up a hill. And, you know, I appreciate all your efforts, and we'll look to see how this progresses. So thank you for your time and responses.
Yes, sir.
So is the county now requiring, once someone has a pump out, for them to send in receipt or whatever proof?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And after the two notices, if we can verify that properties have been pumped out, we send out the zoning violation letter. It gives them 30 days to have the property pumped out or to appeal the violation notice. When we send out a zoning violation, we automatically include language consistent with the state code that gives the applicant 30 days to appeal that notice to the Board of Zoning Appeals. In this case, or this first round where we've actually sent out violation notices, nobody, none of the recipients appealed the violation notice. So in practice, because there was no appeal, if we go, if and when we go to court, or if and when the county attorney goes to court, then in theory, they can't raise a legal defense at that time that, you know, they're appealing the notice, that they are in effect guilty of the zoning violation for which they've been charged. Now, they can come into compliance between now and the court date by getting the system pumped out. In theory, they could go to a judge, and the judge can say, you know, you've got, I'll give you 30 days to get it pumped out, or you're in contempt of court, or whatever the judge may decide. I'd be interested to see how many other localities in the Commonwealth actually take people to court for not having their system pumped out.
Yeah, because I heard that it's, you know, nobody is, no counties are enforcing it very strictly. What rotation are we on right now? Do you or Ms. Sekno, when we're coming back around to RPAs year?
No. I think the violation, go ahead, Lisa.
We just did RPAs 2020, beginning of 2020.
2020, beginning of 2022, that have to be done by early 2023.
But I don't think I received a notice.
And I don't think you're in a
Well, if your house and your drain field are not in the RPA.
Okay, I thought it was, but I'm in zoning agricultural.
Right, so the resource, it's not the Resource Protection Overlay District.
Okay.
It's the RPA designation of the Chesapeake Bay Overlay District. So zoning-wise, you're fine. Unless you're actually in a Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area, you would get your notice when we send it to the Port Royal District.
Okay, which, do you know when that's coming?
That, I believe that's next year.
Okay.
Yeah, I think
I think the cycle is Resource Protection Areas, Port Royal, Reedy Church, Madison Reedy Church in Bowling Green. So the first zoning violations went out to the Bowling Green Magisterial District properties that did not respond.
Yeah, because I was thinking last time we received something, I didn't have to send back, there was no requirement to send back something.
I think we have language at the bottom of the letter.
Okay.
That says, you know, provide evidence that you've had your system pumped out and buy a receipt or date it was pumped. I can actually provide copies of the letter. We've done it enough now, it's pretty consistent. We don't, I think we've ironed out all the Kings in it.
Okay.
But I'll make a copy for the commission members for the work session.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Fincham, I do have a few things, but in lieu of going over them here tonight, I want to really formulate them as they relate to land use and land disturbance and so forth.
Yes, sir.
As pertaining to agriculture. So let me compile all of that. I'll get my concerns to you in writing.
Okay.
And then we can discuss. So you'll be prepared.
Okay. Very good. Yes, sir.
We've discussed it. I don't know that we've opened a public hearing yet. So I think the appropriate action would be to open a public hearing on. No, you could do the public hearings jointly. You would just have to make the motion separately. So it would be TXT 07, 08, 09, and 10-2022.
But you already made staff report, right, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I need to open up the public hearing. Public hearing is open on TXT dash 07 dash 2022?
And 08?
08, 09, and 10. Is there anyone on, speak on this matter? Public hearing is closed?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if you will recall, we were going to continue the public hearing on these four items to your October 27th meeting.
Yes.
That's what I was thinking. So we don't need to make motions tonight, do we?
You would need to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Each motion individually.
But not motions on these text amendments.
No, the motion would be to continue the public hearing on, for example, TXT 07 dash 2022 to your October 27th meeting.
Okay.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we move TXT 07 2022. We continue the public meeting through our, until our October 27th meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And we would need the same motion for TXT 08 dash 2022.
I'll make the motion that we continue our public hearing for 08 until October?
13.
13.
27.
October 27.
Public hearing, October 27.
Until October 27.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
So I'd like to, again, make a motion from TXT 09 2022 to continue the public hearing until our October 27th meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion.
I'll get the last one out of the way. Again, TXT 10 dash 2022. I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public heating, or public hearing until our October 27th meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, your next public hearing is TXT 11 dash 2022, which is an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Caroline County by amending Article 2 definitions, which would amend the definition of special events facility to allow a venue that is permitted by the Board of Supervisors to host ticketed or public events with Board approval. The specific amendment that you have before you, the definition would be amended to add the language, "A special events facility may request Board of Supervisors' approval for up to four times in a calendar year to hold public or ticketed events." This in part was driven by, we have a facility that has a special use permit as a special events facility. It's located on a larger tract of land. They were looking to hold a Christmas-related event that was open to the public. And by definition, public events are not permitted in a special events permit. So the purpose of this amendment would be to expand the opportunity for special events facilities with Board of Supervisors' approval to have up to four events a year that might be open to the public as a general admission or a ticketed or fee event. And with that limited expansion, we don't think that's inconsistent with the original intent of the special events permits.
Would these special ticketed events have to come through the commissioners before they go to the Board or just go straight to the Board?
The way it would work is during the zoning process where an applicant is requesting approval of a special events permit, at that time, you typically, the commission will recommend conditions to the board specific to each individual application. An applicant could request to be allowed up to four of these public events a year. Four times is basically quarterly, although there's nothing in here that would limit it to one a quarter. So as part of their application and your review, they would request, could request these four public events along with 10, 12, 20, 60, 100 private events such as weddings or conferences, uses like that that are currently allowed.
Oh, it's the normal.
So it's a limited expansion.
Normal application process.
Yes.
They apply and then it goes to us and then it goes to the Board.
Yes, ma'am.
With our recommendation.
Yes, and this will be part of that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fincham, would these be single-day events only or could they have multiple days?
I think the idea is that it's a single-day event, a multiple-day event. I think you would want to evaluate that as part of your process. Looking at the size, looking at the characteristics of the property, et cetera. Because again, each of these is supposed to be on a case-by-case basis.
Right, I just don't want to see the commissioners be placed in a position of, Joe Blow had a one-day event. Sally Sue was able to get a three-day event based upon the singular approval.
Understood. I think, I think it would be, we would make sure it's clarified in the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more questions, the appropriate action would be to open a public hearing.
Public hearing is open on TXT dash 11 2022? Anyone want to speak on this? Public hearing is closed. And staff have any more questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Okay.
Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TXT 11 2022, I recommend that TXT 11 2022 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, your last public hearing tonight is subdivision ordinance amendment 01 dash 2022, which would amend Article 6.3 and 6.9 of the subdivision ordinance to include additional language related to the identification of Chesapeake Bay preservation areas. Again, this language is, in response to our discussions with DEQ staff, we felt that it was appropriate to put this language into our subdivision ordinance. So it will be in the packets that we give to applicants during the subdivision process where they understand what the requirements are related to the identification of Chesapeake Bay preservation areas as well as wetlands and other Chesapeake Bay features. And this will be cross-referenced back to the overlay district as well. But again, this is actually where we evaluate the site plan, the subdivision in this case. So this amendment is similar to some of the site plan changes where we're taking details that are in the overlay district and putting them in the appropriate sections of the ordinance where we actually administer the development regulations.
After we have the public hearing on this one, since this also has to do with the Chesapeake Bay Act, is this one of the ones that you're recommending that we continue the public hearing on?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're actually still working on these. So when you have the final draft document from us for your work session that we've discussed, then we can go over any changes in advance of the continued public hearing on the 27th.
Public hearing is open. Anyone want to speak on this matter? Public hearing is closed. Can I make a motion to?
This one would be October 27th, correct?
Continue, yes, ma'am. Continue the public hearing.
I don't know if anybody had any discussion before the motion. Well, then I'll make a motion for SO 01, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
2022. The public hearing be extended to October 27th.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that concludes the items before you tonight. As we had previously discussed, the possibility of a work session on October 13th, which would also be a Thursday night, which we would have here at the Community Services Center to address any other issues that are identified by the commission as well as allow staff to make the final proposed staff changes to the items that you have continued the public hearing on tonight.
That's cargo.
If you can get it on pizza.
With that.
6:30 or earlier?
Whatever y'all like to do. Okay.
6:30.
Or dinner at 6:00 and a meeting at 6:30.
Okay.
That's why I asked. So you want us here around 6:00 if we want to eat? Meeting at 6:30. You need a motion on that, correct?
Yeah, the appropriate motion would be to adjourn to October 13th.
Work session.
At 6:30 for a work session. So moved.
Second.
I want to get it straightened out.